I, Mayor Matt Girding, call the July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four city council meeting for the city of Somersworth to order. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Peppin.
Yep.
Vincent.
He is excused.
Gibson.
Here.
Parity Catanzaro.
Here.
Micho.
Here.
Witham.
I'm here, just slow.
Goodwin.
Here.
Cameron.
Excused.
Austin.
Here.
Counselor Michu will lead the council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the very common public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect timing. All right, next on the agenda is the recognition of our indigenous people, our native ancestral Americans. This meeting takes place on Indikina, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waterways, living beings, and the Alnabuck, the people who have stewarded Indikina throughout the generations. Item four on the agenda are any scheduled public hearings. We have none tonight. Item five is comments by visitors. City, excuse me, the Somersworth City Council and Mayor's office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule seven dash C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speaker shall not enter into a debate with any persons, the mayor, council members, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight? Seeing no one, we will move on to Agenda item six, which is the approval of the consent calendar. Chair will obtain a motion to approve the consent calendar, which includes the minutes of the city council meeting held on June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Counselor Austin.
I'll move adoption of the consent calendar.
Counselor Austin moves the consent calendar be adopted as presented, seconded by Counselor Parity Catanzaro. Question for the council is on the adoption of the consent calendar. If you are in favor of the motion, you'll state by saying aye. If you are opposed, you'll state by saying no. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, ayes appear to have it. Ayes have it. Consent calendar is adopted. Item seven on the agenda is comments by city councillors. Are there any comments this evening by councillors? Seeing none. We'll move on to Agenda eight, or Agenda item eight, which is communications. We have none. Item nine is presentations of petitions and disposal thereof by reference or otherwise. We have none. And ten is the mayor's report. A few items tonight. First up, I want to remind folks that the filing period for the special city elections opens this Wednesday on July seventeenth and will go until August first. So, anyone who is interested in running in our September tenth special election for either Ward Five School Board, Ward Three School Board, or at-large city council should file their intent to run with the city clerk during that period. Secondly, I do want to promote our Don't Trash Somersworth events. Counselor Cameron is not here tonight, but she did flag for me that they have one coming up on July twentieth from two to three o'clock at Willan Pond Trail. So, anyone who is interested, they could use the help to help clean up the trails. Next, I have a report out on the mayor's housing task force. I'll try to be quick with this. We had a meeting on July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. We discussed our goals, but decided that because we're hopeful that more people can take time to look at them, that we would move forward with having an actual vote on our goals at our next meeting. From there, we discussed some of the priority areas of focus for the task force. The task force had recently met at a workshop with Stratford Regional Planning Commission. At the workshop, we identified a number of priority areas. Of those, we highlighted three. That would be priorities for Stratford Regional Planning Commission. So, that was re-categorization of multifamily, dissolution of base districts under form-based codes, and the allowance of residential or mixed use in the CI slash CN districts. Those were focus areas for Stratford Regional Planning. And so, as a committee at the meeting that we most recently had, we thought we would discuss some of the other priority areas that were discussed at the workshop previously. The, we started by talking about some of the challenges in the cities. We kind of discussed multifamily. And from there, we started to discuss how parking and multifamily units are kind of interrelated. Parking has always been a struggle in terms of like site planning for new development and infill. And we really wanted to see potential ways that the city could partner with developers to maybe allow for on-street parking as part of kind of their plans for development. In doing so, however, we kind of realized that this had almost like trickle-down effects to other areas. And the biggest area that we kind of identified as like if we wanted to move forward with this was winter parking bans. Because if we're allowing more residential units to utilize on-street parking, we run into struggles with winter parking bans when all those cars all of a sudden need a place to be. Counselor Witham, who chairs Public Works and the Environment, said that he would take that up as a consideration at their next meeting. So, they will soon be discussing changes to the winter parking ban to potentially allow for more flexibility in identifying areas in the city that maybe could be areas where people can park so that it makes it more easy for residents during this time and more friendly to folks who utilize our on-street parking in the winter. From there, the task force discussed adjustments to our zoning ordinance regarding accessory dwelling units. This has been a big focus area for the task force, and we were quite excited to actually start diving into this and making some recommendations. We looked quickly at the ordinance. We read through it as it reads in our city zoning ordinance. And we had a motion come out that actually was to make a recommendation to allow for detached accessory dwelling units, whereas it is currently written as only allowing for attached accessory dwelling units. So, again, the motion would change that language. It would also remove specific sections that were specific to the attached language. So, again, removing a section that talked about allowing attached units via breezeway or something like that, as well as removing sections that were related to the appearance of the home, saying that it couldn't look like a duplex or something like that, which we felt was a bit subjective. And if we are allowing for separate units that are on the lot, that are detached from the home, it goes directly in the face of the mission of that ordinance change. The, it was recommended that it go before the planning board for review prior to coming to council, but I wanted to flag that for folks, that it will be coming to council after it goes before the planning board. Planning board has no oversight, but we felt like it was important to flag this for them just so they could have a look at it and provide a recommendation to council before it comes to us. At some point soon after that, we will all see it, the ordinance change, and it will be up for us to vote on. From there, we had one more final kind of thing that we highlighted, which was a very kind of nuanced language that is written in one of our Tables of Uses, Table four, point eight, point one, which essentially has a footnote that limits conversion of buildings into multifamily units if the building was built after a specific date in nineteen eighty-nine. So, it was a strange, limiting footnote that seemed to kind of be arbitrary and had been highlighted during our workshop as something that seemed to be a fairly easy and quick change. We discussed how this is something we were all in agreement on fixing, but because of potential kind of downstream effects of any edits, we were more hopeful that city staff would provide us a recommendation on how to change that footnote prior to making a recommendation out of the committee to council. So, we're hopeful that we will see something soon, and then that will make its way to us as well to make that change. But from there, we had a few other discussion items, including like maybe one-way traffic pattern changes, bike spaces, new development, and other discussions on off-street parking. But for the most part, those were the really three priority issues that we discussed. After that, we, let's see, set our next meeting, which will be August thirteenth at seven PM, and that was pretty much it. So, my last item tonight is something I probably should have prepared thoughts for, but have been, I think, like all of us, probably thinking too much about over the past few days. It's about the assassination attempt on former President Trump. I think we, as a city and as a people, can all agree that any sort of political violence or violence involving gunfire, shootings, or attempted assassinations is not within the values that we all strive to live by as a community, and certainly is highly frowned upon. I just wanted to make that statement that I am just so saddened to see that this is where we are at. I've felt for a while that this election almost seemed so quiet. It was as if for many, many months, and maybe it's because the primary season was very different this year than it normally has been for New Hampshire, but it seems that over the past couple of weeks even, things have ramped up to a fervor that I know I have never seen in my lifetime. I know I've never witnessed an assassination attempt on a living president or ex-president. And it scares me. And I think it scares a lot of us. I think that there's a handful of things that can be said or done, but I think at the very minimum, what I encourage us to do as a community, because, you know, as much as I'd like to think that those in power that are at higher positions of office watch our meetings and listen to what we have to say, I have to be a little realistic in knowing that that might not be the case. So, in coming to tonight's meeting, I wanted to just think of simple things that we, as a community, could do to think about this. And where I always lean when thinking about these things is how would I describe this to my classroom? I'm on summer break right now, so there's no class to talk about it with, but I think maybe the city, in some sense, could be how I practice this. Because I bet you, even when I get to school in August, late August, kids will be asking questions. But I think for those who are talking about this with family and friends, I encourage you to just lead in with compassion. Whether you do or do not agree with the policies and politics of the man that was the victim of the attempted assassination, his life has value, and the ways in which we talk about it have strong impacts on how people think about the discussion. I know even when it happened, the folks that told me about it were making jokes about, oh, you know, this or that. And again, I'm not going to repeat the jokes necessarily, but oftentimes it, those jokes came from a place without compassion. And I think that we need to remember that discussions of violence and jokes about violence can sometimes beget and further the actions of violence. And so, I hope that as we talk about this, we use this as an opportunity to remember that is not who we want to be as a country. That is not who we certainly are as a community. And so, I hope that everyone can extend compassionate sentiment towards the ex-president and towards others in politics and in their lives. So, I just wanted to say, it was really sad. I hope, hope, hope that those who have a bigger kind of soapbox than I also start to express those same sentiments so that the rhetoric tampers down. But I do fear that we are heading into an election that is only just beginning and has many more months left in it. I hope that we can just make it to November with having the only fighting be between policy and not people. So, that's all I have. So, we'll move on to the next thing. Next on the agenda is Agenda item eleven, which is reports of standing committees. First up, we have the Finance Committee, which is Counselor Witham.
Yeah, no report from Finance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Government Operations. Counselor Michu.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Government Ops, we had a meeting on June twenty-fifth in two thousand and twenty-four at four thirty here at City Hall. First on the agenda was to approve the minutes that was held on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Second on the agenda was the appointment to boards, commissions, and committees per city charter, city ordinance, chapter twenty-nine, administrative codes, and council rules and regulations. Tonight, we'll have in front of us the first reading of Resolution number one twenty-five to amend the council rules and regulations, section seventeen, appointments, which is all openings will be advertised for sixty days on the city website, Facebook page, government access channel twenty-two, inside City Hall, and at the library. And once the mayor has made a nomination, the position will remain open till the next scheduled city council meeting. The following city council meeting, the nominees are also required to attend that meeting. So, if there's any questions from city council, the nominees can answer them. Third on the agenda was ward polls and election of officials. The city manager and city clerk provided information from the New Hampshire State Secretary of State of New Hampshire, in which basically says that if anybody's running for election and they're working at the polls and they're voting, they're going for a position at the ward polls, they can work the polls. But if you're running for city council, school board, any important position like that, you are not allowed to work the polls. You have to stay out, except you go and vote, then you leave. Then, the fourth is a policy on social media and the website security. Mr. Bellmore stated that the city staff has been, has attended recent training on the importance of cybersecurity, and the city staff has contacted with the ATOM group to work with the city IT vendors for security and upgrade programs for our system. Fifth on the docket was public comments during committee meetings. During the meeting, during a committee meeting, it is the direction of the chair, if that person or anybody else, to allow them to talk if anybody's attending those meetings. So, basically, what we came out of, it will be up to the chair, and it would be advised that if they want to, they can put it on their agenda. So, people knows they can come up and talk. But they are allowed to talk, but it's up to the chair's discretion. And six was miscellaneous items, which really wasn't that much, and we adjourned at five twenty-one PM.
Thank you. Next up is Economic Development Committee. Counselor Goodwin.
No report.
Thank you. Next is Public Safety Committee. Counselor Peppin.
I have one scheduled for this Wednesday at four thirty.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Public Works and the Environment Committee. Counselor Witham.
Public Works and Environment Committee will be meeting tomorrow. On a lengthy agenda is the snow emergency parking ban, which I look forward to discussing when it's ninety-three degrees outside. Interesting.
Thank you. And lastly, Recreation Committee, since Counselor Cameron is out, Vice Chair Michu, is there a meeting?
And no report this evening.
Thank you so much. All right. Next brings us to item twelve, which is reports of special committees. Are there any reports of special committees tonight? Seeing none. We will turn it over to the city manager to deliver his manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of council, I'll read from my written report to council that was included in the meeting packet. Jumping down to new business, we have ordinance one twenty-five, to amend chapter thirty, conduct in public parks, the definition section under section two. The Rec Committee voted to recommend these edits to the list of city parks to the full council. They met on June twelfth to accomplish that vote and discussion. As noted in the, in the actual resolution document, USS Somersworth Pocket Park was part of the sale of the former police station located at Five Main Streets. And there's a couple of other changes in regards to Ash Street Park being called Ash Street Butterfly Park and making recognition of Veterans Memorial at Stein Park. I did provide a red line document showing those proposed edits, and as with all ordinances, I recommend a public hearing be scheduled for the next council meeting on August twelfth.
Without objection.
The next ordinance, two twenty-five, to amend police offenses, no parking anytime. The Traffic Safety Committee met on June twelfth also and voted to recommend this ordinance change to the full city council. Attached was a copy of the memorandum from Fire Chief Matt Moore that was provided to the committee, along with a map showing the no parking side that is being proposed. Again, recommend a public hearing be scheduled for the next council meeting on August twelfth.
Without objection.
And I just mentioned that it is also on the Public Works and Environment Committee. It was their meeting Tuesday before the next, the second reading. And Public Safety might want to take it, take it up also on Wednesday if the chair is so declined to do so. Last resolution regarding amending council rules and regulations, section seventeen, appointment. As mentioned by the chair, Government Ops Committee met on June twenty-fifth and voted to recommend these amendments to the full council after some discussion. Again, as we usually tried to do, we provided a copy of red line showing the proposed amendments. Moving on to other, the vote to authorize the city manager to approve the request by ProCon of Manchester regarding waivers of noise nuisance control ordinance to allow extended work hours for construction activities. Since this project is months away, I recommend the council votes will authorize the city manager to work with ProCon to provide reasonable times to complete these construction activities. Since they are not yet able to provide what days or what times, it wasn't clear on what you'd actually be voting on, but if you provide me that authorization, I can work with them. And I did provide you a copy of their request as well as a question I had regarding why we needed to waive the noise ordinance for water taps, which we generally don't do, but it's in regards to traffic if they need to do it. Few informational items, if you will. There's groundbreaking for twenty-two Green Street Apartments Construction Project, Tuesday twenty-third at ten AM, if folks are able to make it. There's also a groundbreaking for the partnership between city and Amara Sco for solar, the solar rate project. And I do provide you some information from Amara Sco. And they're working with EPA to develop a program, not inviting the public, but we want to limit it to around somewhere in the order of a dozen to two dozen people, as you saw in the copy of the email, I believe. So, if you could tell me if you're available Monday, August twelfth at ten AM, we'd like to have some city councils or the mayor to provide a comment or two. I can let them know, as well as let me know about Green Street so that we can share with the developer in case they want to work that into their program. And I did provide National Night Out Tuesday, August sixth, from four to seven at Jules Besson Park. And it's been a very successful event over the last many years. And we've held it at Jules Besson Park, and it's worked out very well. That concludes my comments. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Members of council.
All right. Brings us to Agenda item thirteen, which is nominations, appointments, and elections. Under nominations, appointments, and elections, in accordance with Council Rule seventeen, appointments, the following are being brought forward for a vote tonight. David Nagy for appointment to the Conservation Commission as an alternate member with a term to expire June two thousand and twenty-seven. Tony Karen for appointment as a Ward Three Select Person with a term to expire January two thousand and twenty-six. And Terry Ritter for appointment as a Ward Two Select Person with a term to expire January two thousand and twenty-six. What are the wishes of the council? Yes, Counselor Witham.
I move that we approve the slate of nominees.
Counselor Witham moves to approve the slate of nominees.
A second.
Seconded by Counselor Michu. All right. Question for the council is on the confirmation of the slate of nominees. Discussion. Seeing none. If you are in favor of the motion, please state by saying aye. If you are opposed, please state by saying nay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, ayes appear to have it. Ayes have it. Nominees have been confirmed. All right, brings us to item fourteen, which is items that have been laid upon the table. We have none, which brings us to fifteen, unfinished business. First up, we have one resolution tonight. So, the chair will recognize the clerk for a second reading on Resolution fifty-four dash twenty-four, which is to authorize the city manager to waive bidding requirements and extend the contract with Resource Management, Inc. of Holderness, New Hampshire, for lagoon maintenance at the Somersworth Water Treatment Plant. City Clerk.
Resolution number fifty-four twenty-four, to authorize the city manager to waive bidding requirements and extend the contract with Resource Management, Inc. of Holderness, New Hampshire, for lagoon maintenance at the Somersworth Water Treatment Plant.
Thank you. Resolution fifty-four dash twenty-four, having been read a first and now second time, is open to further amendment. Seeing no amendment. I will look for a motion on Resolution fifty-four dash twenty-four. Yes, Counselor Peppin?
Move for adoption.
Counselor Peppin moves for the adoption of Resolution fifty-four dash twenty-four, seconded by Counselor Goodwin. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Resolution fifty-four dash twenty-four. Discussion. Seeing none. If you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution fifty-four dash twenty-four, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro.
Yes.
Micho.
Yes.
Resolution fifty-four dash twenty-four has been adopted. That brings us to item sixteen on our agenda, new business. First up, we have our ordinances. We have two. The chair will recognize the clerk for a first reading on ordinance one dash twenty-five. We did it. We're in year twenty-five, everyone. To amend chapter thirty, conduct in public parks, section two, definitions number two regarding edits to the list of city parks. City Clerk.
Ordinance number one twenty-five, to amend chapter thirty, conduct in public parks, section two, definitions number two, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The city of Somersworth ordains that the ordinances of the city of Somersworth, as amended, be further amended as follows. Amend chapter thirty, conduct in public parks, section two, definitions, number two, as follows. Remove USS Somersworth Pocket Park and rename Ash Street Park to Ash Street Butterfly Park and add Veterans Memorial at Stein Park. Background: The city of Somersworth sold property located at Five Main Street, the former police station, of which the USS Somersworth Park, Pocket Park was included in the sale. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage. Sponsored by councilors Nancy Cameron, Richard Micho, Martin Peppin.
Thank you. Ordinance one dash twenty-five, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until the next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time we will have a public hearing. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on ordinance two dash twenty-five, to amend chapter thirteen, police offenses, section three point one point D, no parking anytime regarding prohibiting parking on the northerly side of Willan Drive. City Clerk.
Ordinance number two twenty-five, to amend chapter thirteen, police offenses, section three point one point D, no parking anytime, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The city of Somersworth ordains that the ordinances of the city of Somersworth, as amended, be further amended as follows. Amend chapter thirteen, police offenses, section three point one point D, no parking anytime, by adding the following. Willan Drive on the northerly side from Route one oh eight to Commercial Drive. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage. Sponsored by Counselor Richard Micho.
Thank you. Ordinance two dash twenty-five, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time we will have a public hearing. Brings us to our resolutions tonight, new resolutions. Chair will recognize the clerk for a first reading on Resolution one dash twenty-five, to amend council rules and regulations, section seventeen, appointments regarding board and committee nominees.
Resolution number one twenty-five, to amend council rules and regulations, section seventeen, appointments, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas, the Government Operations Committee recommends amending the city council rules and regulations, section seventeen, appointments, by striking it in its entirety and replacing it with the following. All board and committee members, member openings will be advertised for sixty days prior to any board member's term expiration. Pending member openings will be advertised and posted to the greatest extent possible, to include City Hall, the library, government access channel twenty-two, city website, and city Facebook page. The sixty-day notice requirement may be waived by the council or other authorized individual or authority. All appointments by the mayor, which require the consent of the council, once made, will remain open until the next regular meeting to allow the members of the council opportunity to properly review the nominee's qualifications. All nominees are required to complete the city's application form for board, commissions, and committees. Nominees are also required to attend the next regular meeting of the city council after their name has been placed on the agenda in nomination by the mayor. All appointments by the mayor, which require consent of the council, shall be residence of the city. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Somersworth that the city council approves the aforementioned amendments to the council rules and regulations, section seventeen, appointments, effective upon the passage of this resolution. Background: Per city council rules and regulations, section twelve, to amend rules, council rules may be amended or new rules adopted by a two-thirds vote of all members of the council present. Sponsored by councilors Richard Micho, Robert Gibson, Paul Goodwin, Nancy Cameron.
Thank you. Resolution one dash twenty-five, having been read a first Resolution 1-25, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Tonight, under other, we have a vote to authorize the city manager to approve the request by ProCon, Inc. of Manchester regarding waivers for Chapter 13D, which is our noise nuisance control ordinance, to allow extended work hours for constructions for the following dates. So it would be concrete slab on grade placement with an approximate timeframe of January 7th to 14th in 2025. Concrete slab on deck placement with an approximate timeframe of January 27th to 31st in 2025. And then two six-inch water taps on Green Street with an approximate timeframe of September 25th to 27th, 2024. What are the wishes of the council? Council Wytham.
I'd like to amend our vote here to just allow the city manager to have the authority to waive our noise and nuisance ordinance as necessary for this project in its entirety.
I'd like to second that.
All right, we have a motion made by Council Wytham to waive the noise and nuisance ordinance to allow the city manager control over timing for this project specific, seconded by Councilor Vincent. So again, first up, we have our amendment to this. Is that clear before the council? All right, discussion on that amendment? Yes, Council Goodwin?
It's maybe more towards the whole motion, so should I hold it?
Um, go ahead and ask.
Okay, so just, I have no problem with the amendment, and I think that makes a lot of sense. I guess my question is more for my education, reminding myself and the rest of the council what the actual work hours are permitted by the ordinance and what, they have dates, but they don't have a duration of hours. Are we saying their work's starting earlier, are they going later? Having some idea of what your expectation is on the extension would be helpful.
City Manager Bellmore.
Well, and as a clarifying email, as we get closer to the, I might as well just read it entirely.
That sounds fine.
As we get closer to the concrete placement dates, we would provide the city with an actual update and more specific timeline duration. Typically, we would start the concrete placements in the morning, and depending upon weather and the curing time, we would be on-site until after midnight or later. As for the water tap, we were going to try to possibly start this work either early in the morning, earlier in the morning or later in the evening to hopefully limit the impact of Green Street with traffic. If this isn't an option, we will do it during the day, just more of a traffic impact possibly. So I think they're looking for both ends of the spectrum. I think, off the top of my head, I can't recall exactly what the noise ordinance is. I think it's 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Dusk.
Seven, 7:00 a.m. to dusk, that's right. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, Council Wytham.
I think this motion just speaks to the, the nature of construction projects, that they're fluid, they're flexible, we're trying to forecast out, you know, months here, and that can be difficult, it might be weather dependent, and I think for us to be business-friendly, to use that term, I think allowing the city manager to make that determination with our vote provides the nimbleness for us to work with the developer in an appropriate fashion. I do recall having conversations, I believe at committee level in the past, whether or not these votes were even needed here, but it is an ordinance, and only the council can waive ordinance. So we are waiving the ordinance, but we're giving the city manager the latitude as to when and how to do that.
Thank you. Yes, Council Gibson.
Okay. I don't have a basic problem with doing this. My only question would be, when they talk midnight, are they just talking, for lack of a better term, keeping an eye on the set period, or is there going to be actual construction noise?
City Manager.
I would assume the curing time, as you indicated, but without all certainty, I couldn't unequivocally state that. I'd be working with our city engineer to make sure the timelines are reasonable and needed.
Okay.
Certainly working with the director of Public Works and the city engineer to be assured that, you know, it's a correct timeline, it's an appropriate timeline.
Okay, because my only concern would be over, that's a residential area, people have to go to work in the morning, and if there's actual equipment running late, that was my concern.
Fair concern. Council Goodwin?
Yeah, I guess share a similar concern with Council Gibson, but I think that nuances, and I would defer to staff to resolve this, active construction activities and noise-generating activities are not necessarily the same thing, so I, I trust the staff will dig into what, what is appropriate when, because obviously noise-generating activities to midnight seems excessive. A question perhaps for other members of council, if this has happened in the, in the past, we've had a way of this ordinance, and we're just anticipating probably to do it again in the future, is there a way to fix this so we can permanently delegate the power to staff?
My guess would be that we must have either written in rules or ordinance, a requirement that we are the only individuals that can waive that. We would need to change, City Manager seems to be, go ahead, you know, I think you know. I was guessing.
We could look at, at amending the ordinance to delegate that power.
Okay.
You've done that with assessing and some other issues, we've delegated that authority.
Great, cool. Other discussion. All right, for ease of this, I think Council Wytham, you had proposed it as an amendment, correct me if I'm wrong, but have it, if we have it as a motion, then we can vote on that? That's all right with you?
Yes.
All right, right with our second. So again, just to clarify, the motion before us is to have the waiving of the noise nuisance control ordinance delegated to the city manager to make those decisions specific to this project. Is that clear to folks? Just want to make sure. All right, without further discussion, we're going to do a roll call vote, so if you're in favor of the motion, please state by saying aye. If you're opposed, please state by saying nay. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council Wytham.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Cuttenzero.
Yes.
Misho.
Yes.
All right, the waiver has been granted. Thanks, everybody. All right, brings us to item 17, which is comments by visitors. So, City of Summersworth and our Summersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with council rule 7-C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speakers shall not enter into a debate with any persons, the mayor, council member, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 18, which is closing comments by council members. We're going to start over here to my left, Council Peppin.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't going to say anything at all tonight, but you did bring up the point of what's happening in city, in federal politics and stuff like that, in elections and stuff. I'm an independent, basically when I go into voters, vote, I try to vote for the person that I think is most competent for the job, that is going to work for the people, people of Summersworth, that are people for the United States, and that's how I place my votes as an independent. I sometimes think the party system does more harm than it does good because they're, they split and they fight against each other and they don't come to a common cause. That's one thing I've liked about this city council. I have an idea where their party is, but I really don't know, and I really don't care. And I don't think anybody here has been aggressive to anybody that's on the city council we disagree, and we learn to know that that's part of the, part of the game, and it's not, it's not held against that person or whatever, and we get along great with each other, at least I think we do, at least I, I don't feel any hard feelings at any person on the city council. And I've always felt proud to be able that way. The politics today has gone so wild, and I think a lot of it's got to do with the press. I mean, no matter what forecast that you, what channel that you listen to, you get a different, totally different attitude, and, and it's become to the point where it has come, the things that are being said through the press ends up going into the other peoples that's watching it constantly, 24/7 now, and it's gotten to the point that even family members won't even talk to each other because they think the other, they didn't like the way the other person voted. My father served in World War II, my father-in-law served in World War II, my brother-in-law served in Vietnam. It's a shame, because those people, and the people that served in the armed forces or whatever, gave their lives for the right for us to have the freedom to vote for whoever we felt. And I really, really feel that sometimes it's almost like a form of brainwashing that they do with the certain people, and it gets darkenedated into them, and they can't think on their own. And, and that's what scares me the most out of it. I feel sorry for the, for the retired fire chief that ended up dying, and his family that has to suffer just because he went for a rally to support somebody, and, and the members that got hurt. There should be no need to that, no need to that at all, especially when you have family members that won't even talk to each other, or you can't even bring up the conversation at a dinner table without it being taken, it ended up in an argument. It shouldn't be that way. That wasn't the way our country was supposed to be designed for. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Council Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Pretty quiet night here at the city council meeting. Not too many people are talking, it's a fast-moving meeting, and these members out here want to get home because they hate being at these meetings. Maybe you don't, I'm just, you know, just saying, you know, you worked all day. But I want to talk about fireworks for a minute. I'm going to talk about fireworks because I think it's important. Obviously, most of you know that I own Hilltop Fireworks. Let's talk about, let's talk about fireworks, the bad things first. Fireworks are nuisance, aren't they? They keep us up at night sometimes, and I hear them going off and I cringe sometimes. One time, we had a city council, my good friend over there, Dave Wytham, they went to his baseball field, and they shot off fireworks, and they got fireworks mess all over his field, and he was upset, and he had to go out there and clean them. We have to listen to them sometimes on weekends because the Oaks shoots fireworks, my company shoots fireworks at the Oaks, for weddings, so it's a celebration thing. And this time of year, we all have to go through the never-ending fireworks drama that we have, and I hear on the unofficial website of the city that, you know, people are complaining about the noise, and, and I have a dog, and my dog's affected by fireworks too. Nevertheless, that's the bad thing about fireworks. And, and sometimes people don't use them correctly, and they get hurt, and for the new fire chief over there, they start fires sometimes, which is never a good thing. Let's talk about the good things. I opened up my business in 2007 here, I got all the permits I needed. I'm the only fireworks business, or the only business, I think, in a city that pays a $1,500 permit fee. For what? I don't know, but you know what? I don't complain about it, I pay it. Another thing I came before the city council with some time ago, is I'm, I'm saying this not to, like, pat myself on the back, but I've always encouraged other companies to come forth and give a little bit more to your city. Let's talk about how much Hilltop Fireworks has given in the 17 years it's been in business here. To date, Hilltop Fireworks has given $510,000 to not only the community, but the civics organizations that are involved. Let's cover some of the things, and I'm very proud to say this. One of the best things that we've ever supported was, I remember when Donald Messia, who was the fire chief here, he's now retired, his stepson, or his son, or Cheryl's son, however you want to put it, had a lung disease, and they were looking for money to give to their family so they could have a lung transplant. Hilltop Fireworks gave $5,000 to that. To this day, I think that's the best thing that we ever did, because a year later, I got a letter that he had full recovery, and he was living a normal life. I remember getting the letter in the mail and actually sobbing in my truck at the end of my driveway from the joy that I had to give him that life, and a chance to be able to be free from any type of constant doctor visits and, and all that goes forth with having a lung issue. That was probably the best thing. But some of the other things that I've given, I've given to all the departments, I've given it to Public Works, SAWs, money, I give it to the fire department, equipment also, I've given to the police department, and we've given to the school system. One year, we gave like five grand, and so a teacher actually could actually stay there, and I'm pretty sure, it was Jackman, what was the first name again? Yeah, what was his name? Maureen Jackman, I'm sorry, Maureen, I forgot. So I'm very proud as a business owner to come forth and give this information, and like I said, I'm not saying this to pat my company on the back, you know? I'm saying it because I encourage other companies that are pretty well off in this city. I understand if you're struggling as a company, you can't make it, and you've got troubles making ends meet, but if you're a company that's making it, help out your city. It, it just, it makes everything so much better, and I live by that. This year, we had another successful year, so I'm going to propose that, I know during the budgetary season, we didn't fund, I think, the Chamber of Commerce, so I'm going to give money to the Chamber of Commerce. I actually talked to the woman from the Chamber of Commerce, and I told her that I was going to give some money to them, in the thousands of dollars. I'm proposing tonight to give the fire department, it's a small amount, but it's still an amount. I'm going to give the fire department 500, I'm going to give the police department 500, and I'm going to give Public Works 500. It's a small amount. In the past, I remember when Dave Kretschmeyer was the chief, and I gave 500, he loved it because the department can use it for miscellaneous stuff, if they have a party and they need whatever it may be, they have a little extra money. Once again, it's not patting Hilltop Fireworks on the back, it's just saying, hey, companies out there, if you're making it, help your city out a little bit. It makes everything so much better. Thanks a lot for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you for your contributions. And just a reminder to businesses, New Hampshire's a pretty low-tax state, so if you're looking to maybe use some of that additional revenue, we would love to have it, so thank you. All right, Council Gibson.
Thank you, Councilor Vincent. We appreciate all you've done for the city over the years. This probably isn't going to be a very popular thing to say, but there's an old saying, calmer is a beast. And what we're seeing in the last couple of days, I think, is a direct result of somebody who is notoriously advocating, I don't want to say the overthrow of the government, but violent reactions to different things and to people. And I have to agree with Councilor Peppin. It's a sad state our country's in, that one of the people vying for the post of leader of the free world was attacked, but it's an environment that's been created by our national politicians. We are fortunate here in New Hampshire, we're a unique state, and don't know if people think about this, but we're the only state in the country that the state government is controlled by the Republican Party, yet all four national representatives are from the Democratic Party, which I think speaks to the way that the people in New Hampshire vote. And one of the things that we could do as a state, I think, is get on the bandwagon with several other states that have gone to open primaries, nonpartisan primaries. And I was sickened when the Democratic Party, and I'll admit, I'm a lifelong Democrat, basically told the state in New Hampshire that our delegates are not going to be eligible to their convention because we didn't follow their rules. Well, I'll tell you what, guys, you start paying for the damn primaries, and we'll follow your rules. The states fund the primaries as far as the election workers and everything else, and yet let the parties dictate the way they operate. And that, to me, is yet let the parties dictate the way they operate, and that, to me, is totally ridiculous. Like I said, if they want, if they want to have their own set of rules for it, let them pay for it. But again, I feel really sad that our country is in the state that we're in now. And as to, again, what Councilor Peppin said, I go to certain family gatherings, and I end up smoking a pack of cigarettes sometimes, because they have to get out of the house and get away from the rest of the family, because if politics ever comes up, it's a disaster. So I know exactly what he's talking about. So that's my two bits for the evening.
Thank you. Councilor Parity Katzenzero.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'll echo a lot of what people have said, and I thank you, Mayor Gerting, for your words. I completely agree, leading with compassion, every life has value, and to focus on the policies, I completely agree. I'm very grateful, as others have said, too, that we may vehemently disagree on some policies, but I feel very comfortable talking to everybody on council. I'm pleasantly surprised when I see people out and about, it's that kind of feeling, and I think that's why we're involved in local politics, because we can really do good, and I'm glad that that camaraderie exists here. One thing I'll just mention on the ordinance, the resolution one-twenty-five, I just want to give a heads-up, I'll be offering a pretty minor amendment ahead of the next meeting. We do say that we're going to post it on the website and the city Facebook page, I think just for future-proofing with social media companies changing. I'll probably be offering an amendment to all official city social media profiles or something to that effect, just so that, that sort of stands the test of time. I'm trying to think of other things that might be written there in the past that we would fax them to people, I don't know, do we do that anymore? But Facebook page may or may not still be a thing X-years into the future, but I hope everyone's staying cool, and that's all for me.
Thank you. Councilor Michu.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank Councilor Vincent for all he's doing for this community, he does a lot. I also like to thank him, he employs my godson, he absolutely loves his job, and he loves working for Mr. Vincent. He's an excellent supervisor. Also, I'd like to mention that National Night Out is coming up, August sixth, at four PM to seven PM at Ward Five, Jules B. Son's Park. I hope everybody shows out, shows up for that, because it's always a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilor Witham.
Before we started, I had no comment tonight, but Councilor Vincent, I want to be very clear, the Noble Pines Ball Field is not mine. Although I'm there a lot, it is not mine, it is the City of Somersworth, it's my unofficial adopt-a-spot. It is a big spot, but it is my spot. Truth be told, the fireworks discharge up there, knock-on wood, has been much better of late. I've kind of resigned myself to the fact that sometimes it occurs, and I rake up the litter, right? It's just what happens. The bigger disappointment is when people think it's kind of cool to do it off the top of the pitcher's mound, which I sort of get, right? It's another foot off the ground, that's all it is, right? But the tarp that covers the mound is an eight-hundred-dollar tarp. Don't ask me why it's so expensive, but that's what they cost. There's a chain sewn into the edge so it doesn't blow away in the wind, and when they light the fireworks on it, it burns holes in it, and then the water gets through, so that's the, that's the real one that kind of gets you craw, if you will. So for those of you that are inclined to light fireworks up there, illegally, I might add, just don't do it on the tarp, so. I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Goodwin.
I just wanted to echo in Councilor Cameron's absence, that the Don't Trash Somersworth event is this Saturday, July twentieth, from three, two to three PM, Willand Pond, accessed off of High Street near the liquor store, so come help the Don't Trash Somersworth crew pick up trash along one of our more beautiful recreation spaces.
Thank you. Lastly, Councilor Austin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Elections matter. Elections matter a great deal, whether it's a local election, or a state election, or a national election. That said, we do have a few openings of local seats that'll be voted on during the primary in September. As the mayor mentioned, the filing period opens this Wednesday, so anyone who is interested in filling either, actually, this city council seat, or the two vacant school board seats, please come and register for those opportunities, and put your name out there, and be prepared to put your name up for the residents to vote. And I encourage everybody to come out and vote on it. I know this is one of those times when we probably expect to see fewer rather than more people come out to the polls, but for a whole bunch of reasons, not the least of which, you now have some local elections that you can chime in on in September. It's important to come out and vote, so please do so. I encourage you to do that. I was very saddened by the events of this weekend. I think that, you know, we've heard many, many reports of significant increases in threats being made to politicians across the country at all levels, even at local levels. Fortunately, I think, you know, locally, we're doing better than a lot of areas are, but we are not immune to that. And there's a lot of reasons why, there's a lot of blame to go around, but, you know, what, it just, there is no place in our society for violence of any kind, particularly political violence. We have a democracy that's designed to allow people to voice their opinions in a number of different ways. You can agree with people, you can disagree with people, we hope we're grown up enough to collaborate and compromise and come to decisions that benefit everybody, at least some. I mean, compromise means not everybody gets what they want, but everybody gets something of what they want. I mean, that's the art of compromise, and I would hope at some point, we can get back to that. We are not there in our country these days. Everybody plants their feet in cement and doesn't move, and that doesn't get anybody anywhere, and in fact, results in situations like we saw this weekend, which are tragic, should not happen, and it doesn't matter who is involved, it shouldn't happen, whether you agree, disagree, dislike, whatever, it doesn't matter, shouldn't happen that way. Democracy's not supposed to operate in a vacuum of violence, so I would hope we can get back to a world where, you know, politics are politics, and there will be discussions, there will be disagreements, but let's be reasonable about it and come to compromise solutions that benefit the whole community at large. Thanks.
Thank you. I have one final comment, because I totally forgot it in my mayor's report, so if you will give me the grace to say it now, that would be much appreciated, it is, thank you to the fire department for your amazing one-hundred-year celebration, that was last week, it was a phenomenal time. I think there were so many folks who attended to catch up with one another, who maybe hadn't seen each other in years, if that, maybe even decades, so thank you to Chief Moore for what was a great event, and actually, on a hot day, it felt pretty nice in there, so thank you for having us and for making the time for that event, so thank you. All right, brings us to item nineteen, which is future agenda items. Are there any agenda items requested for future meetings? Seeing none, move on to twenty, which is non-public sessions, we have none. Brings us to our last agenda item, item twenty-one, adjournment. Councilor Vincent moves that the city council stand adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting, seconded by Councilor Parity Katzenzero. Question for the council is adjournment, if you're in favor, you will state by saying aye, if you're opposed, you will state by saying nay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, eyes have it, we are in adjournment.